Thank you for the opportunity to be here and learn your word. Help us to open our ears to listen and help us to interpret your word in a way so that we can use it to make our lives better in your service. Amen. All right, Dave again asked a very, very interesting question last week, and that was, we've written our text, Jesus says that the only way to heaven is...
Through him.
Through him. So his question was, what if people don't know him? Well, that opens up a very, very, a large set of debates in theology that's been going on for centuries. For example, in the early Renaissance, there was this vague to do about whether man was born, human beings were born basically good,
Yeah.
and society corrupts them, or whether human beings were born basically bad, and science, I mean, society improves them. And this, they would go on this debate back and forth and back and forth and back and forth, and I mean, that was Rousseau and people like that. That's how they made their money. And then there was a third, there he is, man and women are basically born neutral. And then what happens to them, happens to them, okay? Then there's the question Leon raised about Judas, well, was he predestined to do what he's doing? Well, all of these things came to light when I did the research. First of all, we're gonna try to answer this by taking a look at, first of all, what scriptures say about this, and then we're gonna go into what some other people say. First of all, Joel 2:30 to 32, that's from page 954. This will be, I'm not gonna read the whole thing because somebody is gonna end up reading that in the service today. But 954, Joel 2, I shouldn't say 30 to 32, I must have messed that up. It is 28 to 32. So it actually, the first sentence starts on the page in the page before. So would somebody like to read 28 to 32 in the book of Joel?
Yeah, I'll read it. "The day of the Lord, and afterwards I will pour out my spirit on all people. Your sons and daughters will prophesy; your old men will dream dreams; your young men will see visions. Even on my servants, both men and women, I will pour out my spirit in those days. I will show wonders in the heavens and on the earth, and blood and fire and bill of smoke. The sun will return to darkness, and the moon to blood, before the coming of the great and dreadful day of the Lord. And everyone who calls in the name of the Lord will be saved, for on Mount Zion and in Jerusalem there will be deliverance, as the Lord has said, among the survivors whom the Lord calls."
What does he say? Now remember, these are the last days he's writing about, so.
Oh, yeah.
So what did he have to do to be saved?
Believe.
Oh, no, he's got very specific words in there.
Call in the name of the Lord.
You have to call in the name of the Lord. He says, "Everyone who calls in the name of the Lord will be saved, and there will be deliverance, as the Lord has said, among the survivors whom the Lord calls." Okay, pay attention to that. That is a very, very important point in our discussion today. It's who the Lord called. Well, who is the Lord going to call? Well, as it turns out, John writes in Revelation, and that's way in the back. Most people don't read this far into the Bible. Revelation is a very scary book to some. And if you turn to page 1302, you will see, and it's towards the end of Revelation. Now remember, what was Revelation really about? What was going on?
Well, for one, wasn't that where John was on the exiles?
Right.
On the island of Patmos, or something like that.
So in other words, but what was John writing about?
Was he writing about Rome?
Well, he was writing, yeah, but based on what?
Symbolic.
But what was going on in his mind? He was seeing what? He was seeing...
A battle.
Well, he was seeing visions is what he was doing. And the bat, like you said, the visions he was seeing is what he's describing here. Okay? So like, there were battles, and there were, you know, the deadly sins, and there were all kinds of things in there. But there are two parts that came out of this that answer what we're talking about here. First of all, would somebody like to read Revelation 21 verses 6 to 8? That's on 1302 and 1302.
Yeah, I got that one. "He said to me, 'It is done; I am the Alpha and the Omega, the beginning and the end. To the thirsty I will give water without cost from the spring of the water of life. Those who are victorious will inherit all this, and I will be their God, and they will be my children. But the cowardly, the unbelieving, the vile, the murderers, the sexually immoral, those who practice magic arts, the idolaters, and all liars, they will be consigned to the fiery lake of burning sulfur.'" This is the second death.
So what does he say? Who's in?
Sounds like all those who believe and adhere to the teachings.
Exactly. Who's out? The whole list there.
Looked like anybody else.
You know, the unbelieving, the vile, the murderers, the sexually immoral, those who practice magic arts, the idolaters, and all liars, their place will be in the fiery lake of burning sulfur. So basically, what John is saying is that not necessarily, not only do you have to believe, but you have to avoid all of the things he just listed there. Because if you say you believe and do any of that stuff, what does that mean?
You're lying.
No, he, well, first of all, he said, "All who do this stuff are out, all. Doesn't matter if you believe or not." So that is pretty clear. And where it gets even more clear is if you turn one page over, and you'll notice that it's right at the end of the book there. Would somebody like to read Revelation 22 verses 14 to 15? It's at the bottom of the first column of 1304.
"Blessed are those who wash their robes, that they may have the right to the tree of life, and may go through the gates into the city. Outside are the dogs, and those who practice magic arts, sexually immoral, murderers, the idolaters, and everyone who loves and practices falsely."
What? John is saying is, when the new Jerusalem comes, which is like the day of, every religion has this. It's like, not quite the end of the world, but the apocalypse. Who's in? "Blessed are those that wash their robes." Blessed are those that do the things that Jesus wants us to do. Okay? That's what he's referring to here. Blessed are those who wash their robes. What's the, you know, what would be a way to wash your robes in those days?
I mean, literally, or?
Literally. What would we, what would we, what would we do?
In the river?
What would, why would a follower want to go into a river?
Baptized to.
Baptism. So he's, that's what he's saying. Those who wash their robes and, you know, are baptized, or do something like it, are going to be saved. Those who do all this other stuff, you're out. That's unfortunate.
I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, all the things listed, are those all considered the seven deadly sins?
Well, actually, they're offshoots of them. The seven deadly sins, I'll tell you a story about that. Any of you have the privilege of watching SpongeBob SquarePants?
No.
Every character in it is one of the seven deadly sins. Every character in it. Now, supposedly, this is true, no one's denying it. For example, Mr. Krab. Mr. Krab's thing is love of money. And there's, I forget which character it is, I think it's Patrick Starry, gluttony, is a deadly sin. SpongeBob's deadly sin is pride.
Isn't that for kids, though, that show?
Yeah, I know, but I'm just telling you, look it up. Everyone, supposedly, every character on that show is one of the seven deadly sins. And that's what the seven deadly sins are.
They're supposed to be teaching something, you know?
But my point is that all the things we've read are offshoots of the seven deadly sins. Pride, gluttony, you know, lack of spirit, they're, you know, every good Catholic can recite them all, because it's part of their catechism. But the point of the matter is that, you know, it's, these things are what you might, the Catholics have a word for them. They're called mortal sins. Mortal sins. If you commit a mortal sin, boy, are you in trouble. Now, supposedly, there's contrition. What contrition is?
Being bad for what you did, or?
Yeah, doing things to atone.
Remorse, remorse.
Yeah. You do things to atone for what you did. Contrition, when you go to confession, is saying so many Hail Marys, you know, saying, you know, saying this to the person you wronged, and all that sort of thing. So they believe that if you have a mortal sin, the contrition for that may be beyond the capability of a human being.
Well, that kind of gets to my next question. That Jesus forgives all sins prior, present, and future.
Right.
Right? And if you sin, and you repent, then you are forgiven. If you commit one of these sins, can you still go to heaven then?
Right, as I said, with proper contrition, the answer would be yes.
So let murder somebody and say you're sorry, and then you're on heaven, yeah, right.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. The contrition for something like that is pretty, is pretty severe, okay? And...
Well, it just sounds like from here, that if you do that, there's no way to make restitution, so to speak.
Well, glad you said that, because there are a lot of other points of view that are more modern. Pope Francis, you all know Pope Francis, right? He's the current pope. I like him for a lot of reasons. My father's name was Francis, my brother's name was Francis, my grandfather's name was Francis, and my middle name was Francis. So you've got the right name. But he also seems to be with it a little bit, you know, with what's going on in the world compared to some of his predecessors. All right.
I have a question too. Why does he refer specifically to dogs?
The, when you do the research, you find out that dogs is a, is sort of like, it's a metaphor for a whole lot of things. In those days, he's not talking about four-legged creatures that wag tails.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, he's talking, you know, for example, male prostitutes were considered dogs in those days. And there were a lot of other things that fell into that category. The problem was, apparently, the translation. There wasn't a good English word that fitted. That's the closest one. All right, so anyway, Pope Francis, he says, "Since his election, Pope Francis has spoken repeatedly about atheists or nonbelievers. There are clear indications in his comments that he believes an atheist can be in a state of grace." Remember those three words, state of grace. "If a nonbeliever were not in a state of grace, it would seem he could not unite with believers in a sincere desire for true world peace." So he's saying, if you're in a state of grace, you're already starting to do some of the things that Jesus wants us to do. You may not know who Jesus is, but you're doing the right things. "Persons who are not in a state of grace can cooperate with actual graces, but only partially and haltingly, until and unless they cooperate so fully to enter the state of grace, at least by an implicit baptism of desire." That's called contrition. In other words, what he's saying is, if they turn such a toll into belief, then there's a chance. If they don't do that, then, you know, they haven't changed anything. There was a sci-fi show called Babylon 5. Did anybody watch that?
Some.
Right, and you, were you a Babylon 5 guy?
A little bit.
Couple episodes.
Yeah, well, what they believed then is somehow there were monks running around. And these were actually violent criminals, and they had some sort of a way to zap your brain so you would forget about that and become a new person. That, it would sure be nice if you could do something like that. But that's not the way it works in our term. So he goes on to say, "And if anyone in a state of grace, is in a state of grace and dies in that state, then he most likely is saved. All persons who die in a state of grace, which is the state of loving God and neighbor." Keep that in mind. Remember what the three things said. If you do, if you wash your robes, if you do the, call in the name of the Lord, if you do all these right things, fine, what Pope Francis is saying, if you do the right things, and you may not know who God is, doesn't matter.
But does that kind of negate the idea that you can't do good looks and get to heaven? You know what I mean, that that's the only thing?
Well, what, that is where the debate comes at. And we're gonna get to that shortly. So he says, "Which is the state of loving God and neighbor, will obtain eternal life in heaven, perhaps after a short or long stay in purgatory."
See, we don't believe in purgatory.
We don't believe in purgatory. But what they say, what they're saying is, that's where the contrition comes.
When you're in purgatory.
So our holy pontiff is indicating that nonbelievers can be saved. They can enter the state of grace by an implicit baptism of desire, and they retain their state if their rejection of belief in God is not an actual mortal sin. If they do commit any actual mortal sin, they can return to the state of grace by perfect contrition. In other words, making a hundred-and-eighty return. In this author's view, nonbelievers include atheists, agnostics, as well as persons who adhere to belief systems that do not include a discreet living being. So a nonbeliever is not synonymous with the word atheist. So what they're saying is, if you do what Jesus wants you to do, even if you're not necessarily sure who Jesus is, if you follow Matthew 25, if you care for the poor, if you do all the right things, then there's a good chance you're gonna be saved anyway. Because the way other people are interpreting what Jesus said, through me, well, what else does he say? How do you love Jesus?
By loving your neighbor.
Yeah, by following his commands. So if you follow his commands, even though you don't know they're his commands, you're loving him anyway. And that's, that's, that also contradicts the idea of, I'm baptized, I am a follower of Jesus, I'm a member of church, therefore I can do whatever I want in life. I can cheat, steal, do whatever, because I'm baptized, you know, I'm in. That's also what they're saying. You know, remember, remember what we read. If anybody starts doing any of those things, regardless of whether they're baptized or not, they are not in.
You mentioned atheist. Isn't a true atheist someone that doesn't believe in Jesus, or God, or anybody else?
That's correct.
Doesn't believe in God, you know, he doesn't believe in God.
But the point is, if this perfect atheist does everything that Jesus commands us to do, without recognizing who God is, but just does it, then what they're saying is, that, you know, what the Catholic Church today is saying is, that they have a chance to be saved. Now, remember, it also says, you may have to spend some time in purgatory, think about it.
But that applies to people of any other religion?
Yeah, exactly, and that's what he means when he says, when he talks about any adhered to belief systems that do not include any discreet living divine being. So that's what he's, that's what he's referring to. Remember, Buddha was a person. Confucius was a person.
What is Allah?
Allah is God, and we'll get to that in a minute. Now, another writer says, "I have shown how and why Catholic Church teaches that non-Christians and even atheists can be saved by grace without explicit facing Jesus. The Magisterium wisely leaves it to God in the speculations of theologians, how exactly that happens." Remember what we read earlier from Revelation. Apparently, there are people who God chooses who enters and who doesn't, okay? "The Council of Fathers do give an important indication of the theological basis for this possibility. They say, 'By his incarnation, the Son of God united himself in some sense with every human being. Christians share in the pastoral ministry and are configured to the death of Christ, and so are strengthened in the hope of attaining the resurrection.'" In other words, we know who Jesus is, and if we do what he tells us to do, we know where it is. And we're assured of that. This applies not only to Christians, but people who do goodwill, and whose hearts, and whose hearts grace is secretly at work. "Since Christ died for everyone, and since the ultimate calling of each of us comes from God, and is therefore a universal one, we are obliged to hold that the Holy Spirit offers everyone the possibility of sharing in this mystery in a manner known only to God." What he's saying, what they're saying is, we know who Jesus is, we know what to do, and if we do it, better for us. Now, if there are other people out there that don't know who Jesus is, don't do it anyway, then they share the possibility. Goes on to say, "The basis for the salvation of all human beings, Christian or not, is the Christ event, the incarnation, death, and resurrection of the Savior. By his incarnation, Christ united himself in some sense with every human being. More than that, he died for everyone, and God calls every individual to share the power of that redeeming death. That falls on us. Therefore, everyone can be saved." So you have two different opinions here. But basically, what they're saying is that if you do the things that Jesus says you should do, even if you're an atheist, then guess what? You're gonna get noticed. What happens after that is what they call a mystery. And a mystery is not like what happens on Perry Mason. A mystery is something, a mystery is something that we know happens, but we're never gonna know what it is, how it works, and what it is, because it's beyond our capability to understand. I always go back to Corporal Kleiner's interview, and they ask him, "When is this thing gonna be over?" And he says, "If I knew the answer to questions like that, I'd give up this gig and run for God." That's a mystery.
So then, like I say, also, what about people who only do stuff that's good for them from the day they're born until they die?
Well?
Where do they fit?
Where do they fit? That's the sin of pride.
And what, and are they ill? Are they ill? Do they have, are they mentally ill, is that why they're that way, and so it doesn't count?
Okay. She opened the door to this one, okay? Make sure you record that. Notice on your list, I have in there what is called predestination. What is predestination?
I always thought it was that from the moment you're born, God knows what's gonna happen, so.
Hold that thought. We Presbyterians believe in predestination. It is part of our core set of beliefs. Here's what the PCUSA says about predestination, and it helps answer your question. It says, "Still, all Christian thinkers must deal sooner or later with the relationship between God's call and the human response. John Calvin's conviction that God is in charge of all events led him to the doctrine that if some people are saved while others are damned, this must be because God chose them for these fates. Having come to that conclusion, Calvin was not shy in stating this view. He says, quote, "By predestination we mean the eternal decree of God, by which he determined with himself whatever he wished to happen, and with regard to every person. All are not created on equal terms, but some are preordained to eternal life, others to eternal damnation, and accordingly, as each has been created for one of these ends, we say that he has been predestined to life or death." That's what Calvin believed. That's why Calvin would have been, you know, easy to, you know, explain why Judas did what he did. A lot of people don't think Calvin was right. A lot of people do think that Calvin was right. "The starkness of affirming that God has pre-selected some for heaven and others for hell has moved people to try to put the puzzle together in several ways. Over the centuries, many long theological essays have been written, presenting different efforts to make it all fit together smoothly, and criticizing the failure of other attempts." Don't worry, I'm not gonna make you read them all. So in other words, as I told you, this debate has been going on for centuries. "The particulars of those arguments will not be presented here. Instead, what follows might be considered a rough sketch map, suitable perhaps for the day tourist, lacking the detail a specialist might want, but sufficient to get a feel of the theological territory. The following four statements below are things that a Christian might intuitively want to say, but it becomes difficult to say all of them." Think about yourself when I read these. One, God's sovereign decision to save is sufficient. All those who God wills to save are saved. That makes sense? Do we believe in that? God loves all the world and wills to save all of them. Do we believe that?
He wants to.
Okay, statement three, some people are damned.
Maybe. My great-grandmother may have not, she was an atheist, her sister was a witch, um, she never went to church. And you're just like, okay, did she go to heaven? I don't know.
But it's a choice.
Exactly. Now you can, this is where it's leading to. It's a choice. And the fourth, because that's the fourth statement. You, boy, you're Chloe Warriors here, Leon. Because the fourth statement is, "Those who are saved must respond in faith." It's a choice.
But there are people who kill this person because it benefits them, kill that person because it benefits them. And they have no, supposedly, they've done that all their lives. They lied to benefit them, they lied to benefit them. They've done it from day one. What are they?
They're mortal sinners.
But how can that be from day one, when they were just a child? And supposedly, their parents punished them, but it had no effect.
Well, that's the point. Is man and woman basically good, or are they basically evil? So it says, "People, you can decide to know the truth or falseness of any of these statements, but the fourth, the first three, but the fourth point becomes problematic. Those who are saved must respond in faith." "For true Calvinists, it becomes difficult to say that God loves the world because God gives many the inescapable destiny of eternal punishment. Calvin calls this God's just-as-blameless, incomprehensible judgment." But how can creating people with the intention of damning them be the mark of a loving God? That's the question you asked, that's the question you asked, and the question you're too dealing with.
I mean, I've met people like that. It's unbelievable. I don't know if you've ever met anybody who they cry when it benefits them to look good. And it's like, whoa.
Well, like I said...
Hard to figure out.
The sin of pride is one of the seven deadly sins. So, go ahead.
That just makes me think, like what she said, some people, if they're inherently bad, but let's say gang movers. They're bad, but they have this, say, family attitude, so they're, you know, they can look after neighborhoods or whatever, but they still kill people. But the other thing that comes to my mind is, if God predestines everything, you wouldn't think He would create people to suffer or be sad in life. And what comes to my mind is what's going on now with the trans, the LGBT, whatever. You know, it's like, to me, He wouldn't create people to be in that situation, or to be where they would not be able to have the same rights or, you know, as everybody else.
That leads in, I ought to pay her extra. Because see, leaving you to the next point I was going to make. What then should the doctrine of predestination mean for people today? First, we should be confident that God gives us, to all of us, the destiny of being transformed into the children of God, all of us. If God has chosen such a destiny for us before we could choose for ourselves, then we are predestined by God for good. Interesting, isn't it? Second, here's the other point, and that leads to what you just said. "We should not be presumptuous, as though we could disdain others because we suppose God loves us more than them."
A society does.
Yeah.
Especially now. It's, I mean, not just that segment of society, but we're getting ridiculous.
Well, that's the point. Listen to what it just says. "We should not disdain others because we suppose God loves us more than them." We have done that for centuries.
And every generation says, "It's getting worse. It's getting worse." And it is, in a way, maybe, but it's not.
I mean, you look at Florida. The governor says Chinese people cannot buy property there now. That's his latest thing.
He's an idiot. Don't even think about it.
But, you know, it's like, we're going backwards.
Yes, we are.
We're becoming more authoritarian. You know, we're getting to Hitler.
Absolutely. Now, they're trying to take books out of the library and stuff.
I'm getting lost here. If God predestines someone, why would He allow that person to do what they're gonna, take Hitler for example?
Yeah, I don't believe that. I don't believe in the predestination.
Okay. Well, here's what we said. We said, "God, or as though we could presume that because God has destined us for good, we could gleefully rebel against God's purpose with no risk, or as though even the most wicked is beyond the possibility of grace of forgiveness." Third, we should be humble, accepting that there are things we do not know. In particular, while we are in the midst of the story, we are not yet in a position to know the end of the story. And fourth, we should be hopeful, with prayerful confidence, that in the end, God's purpose will indeed be fulfilled in our own lives and in the life of all the world. And why not? Why should we not trust and pray for God's will to be done, or as earth as it is in heaven? And why not also live on that basis, living the lives of hope, faith, and joy, and those whose destiny is to be children of God? One of the things that's, you know, that fits Dave's question, it's a recent phenomenon. Do you recall the, you know, this famous saying about what did the devil do? In the 60s, that was a big saying. "The devil made me..."
No, devil made me do it?
"The devil made me do it."
Like you weren't in control.
Exactly. So there's the other belief that Satan is still running around out there and is looking for souls and finds them. Okay? And basically, if God predestines us for good, and Satan finds them and is able to work into some person like Hitler's life, or Idi Amin's, or whoever you want to pick, you're gonna find that that can still happen. And that's why the scriptures always keep saying about looking out for Satan. We don't, we don't think about that much anymore. We seem to believe that if we do something wrong, I mean, watch it with the law and order. What's the big defense now? He couldn't stop himself. Or he's got some sort of brain disorder where he couldn't stop.
They don't take responsibility. They always find somebody else, or someone else. Yeah.
And what is Mr. McCoy always say? Hey, we can't be responsible for somewhere.
And again, that's where the whole thing comes in. Even though the Bible is good and everything, some of these issues, there's no definite answer.
Right.
And that's...
Well, that's, nope, there isn't a definite answer.
That's right. And that's why, that's why we're human. I can, you know, like I said, if you watch these shows, there was a classic example. There was a lady in Cleveland who insisted that her son had some sort of a disorder, and found some psychologist, or psychiatrist, rather, that diagnosed it, that said everything he was told to do, he did the opposite. And the weight of the world came down on this woman. Like I said, all you have to do is find some psychiatrist somewhere that said, "Yeah, this is about a disorder." And then what does the prosecution do? Finds another psychiatrist that says the first psychiatrist doesn't know what he's talking about. Right? But that's, that's the whole point. You know, we believe as Christians that God destinates us for good. We're destined for good. And it's our job to look out for temptations and things that would stray us from that path. And it's not easy. Okay? It's not easy. It's not fun. You would think it would be simple, but it isn't. And so basically, what we're saying today is, everybody has the opportunity to be saved. And the easiest way to do it is to do what Jesus tells us to do because we know what that is. Now, if other people do with the things that Jesus tells them to do without knowing what it is, more power to them. But it's God's decision. But the most important thing is about, is about people who say, "I know what to do, but I'm gonna do something different." You know, can you be, can you be a member of the Italian mob, which doesn't exist, by the way? But could you be a member of the Italian mob and go to be Catholic at the same time?
That's the way they portray it all, too.
Did you see the first Godfather movie, The Way It Ends? Where he's wiping out all the heads of the families, and what's Michael doing?
He's at the baptism.
He's baptizing his son, saying, "I renounce sin." The truth of the matter is, God knows what you did or didn't. Okay? And that's, the whole teaching of Jesus is, it's not so much, you know, knowing who I am. It's knowing who I am and what I'm about, and doing what I teach you to do.
It's something you're always striving for.
Precisely.
People are not perfect.
Precisely. One of the things that churches involved, Presbyterianism was involved in, is Matthew 25, and one of, you know, doing good things for people. And one of the issues today is, most of the good things that are done for people are done by non-Christians. There's a whole lot of folks that go to Habitat for Humanity that represent companies, and, you know, represent, you know, fast food chains and all that kind of stuff. They do it because they work for these organizations. These organizations have that as a value. Are all of them Christian? I don't know. The other thing, the other examples, you know, things like when a steel company decides to have a food drive, and they get bags of food, do you think they ask, "If you're a Christian, don't give me a bag?" They don't care where it comes from, and the people who get the food don't care where it came from. See, doing that's the easy part. The hard part is staying committed to it in a Christian sense. That's the hard part. So if others, if others find a way to do that, without, you know, saying, "I know Jesus," or "I'm gonna follow Jesus," or anything, if they find a way to do that, then it's up to God to decide, not us. And then there's gonna be a lot of people that do the philosopher's lament, Dave. Do you know what the philosopher's lament is? Philosophers say, "I have a choice in life. I can either live as, knowing there's a God, and knowing there's a Jesus, and following that path, or I can live a life that's, where I can do whatever I want, whenever I want, at any time I want, and I don't care. I have that choice." So how do they decide what to choose? Well, let's say you follow God and Jesus, and you find out in the end, we don't believe this, but find out in the end that God doesn't exist. Well, that means I probably lived a life that's a lot less fun than I could have, right? But if I go the other way, and live wherever I want, and commit all kinds of sins, and do all that, and I find out God does exist, remember what we read about the eternal sulfur fire? So based on that logic, I better believe in God. There are people that believe in God just for that reason. They don't believe in God because they really care about other people or anything. They believe in God because they're more afraid of what happens if they don't.
My parents never went to college, but very often, especially my father, would say something really, like a philosopher probably said at some point, "What's the purpose of living if you don't believe in God?"
Yeah. You see, that's the whole, that's the whole crux of the matter. And that's why the debate is still going on. And you know what I will say? I will say, "What happens to other people should not be my main concern." My main concern is what happens, what I do. If I do all the right things and nobody else does, then, then I'm not gonna worry about them. They had their chance. Now, will I help other people do the right things? Of course. We're called to do that. But anybody remember who John Wooden was? John Wooden coached UCLA back in the heyday. He was, you know, Kareem Abdul-Jabbar's coach, he was Bill Walton's coach. I mean, they won like a hundred national titles at that time. But he was also a devout Christian. And he said, "If the worst thing that they can find out about who I am is that I'm a devout Christian, and I believe in God, and I do what God wants me to do, then I hope you all convict me." And that should be the philosophy here. Like I said, if you go deep into this stuff, you're gonna find all kinds of discussions and whatnot. But the scriptures are clear. People who are in, are people who love God, can do the things that God wants them to do. And you can do the things God wants you to do, and may not know who God is, but you're still loving God if you do. You see, that's what Jesus is saying. If you do, if you follow my commands, then you love me. Doesn't say, "Follow my commands," you know how to spell my name. It says, "Follow my commands, and you will love me. And if you love me, you love the Father." That's what John has been talking about all this time. So it's a fun debate. Maybe we should, maybe we should have like a debate club and talk about things like this. But this is such deep theology.
Yes, and again, I have a book. I should read it again. The guy is trying to get a better faith and belief in Allah, and he finds Jesus in his wanderings and looking things over, and he's like, "Oh, yeah, Jesus does exist. Now I can believe in Jesus too."
Yeah. See, that's the whole point. You see the second part of The Winds of War? Anybody remember The Winds of War? That was the Robert Mitchum thing.
Oh, wow. Long time ago, huh?
It's a book, it's like about that thick. And they made too many series about it. And one of the characters is the naval officer's father-in-law, who is a Jew, but a Jew who believes in Jesus. They do exist. And the reason he believes that is just like you said, the farther he goes along, the more obvious it became to him. Now, he never left his Jewish faith. And as a result, he ends up dying in a concentration camp because of it. But the point of the matter is that there are ways that you can recognize who Jesus is. Jerry Canard, who has an IQ level that is way above anything I would have. We were talking about what happens if somebody's born in a remote region of the world somewhere, on top of a mountain, where they, you know, they basically care for themselves up there. And never, you know, what about them? They have no religion. And Jerry said, "Yeah, but eventually they come up with one."
And they say that there are, that sometimes Jesus or God will reveal themselves to people who aren't in society, that are remote, and they'll reveal themselves to them.
Well, who did we study that that happened to?
Paul?
Paul! Yeah!
There are those possibilities where Jesus or God could say, "Hey, here I am, I'm real."
Look at Jacob de Shazer. Do you remember Jacob de Shazer? What was he most famous for?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
He was one of the...
The one in the concentration camp, is that?
Yeah, well, yeah, he was a Doolittle Raider that was captured by the Japanese in a concentration camp. And he, after the war, became a missionary in the city nearest to where the camp was. And one of the people he ran into was one of the first pilots that led the raid on Pearl Harbor. And he had written a pamphlet, you know, de Shazer had written a pamphlet, this other guy had read it, and wanted to become a Christian. And in fact, he was a minister in the United States. And spoke for years. I think his name was Hushida. So, I mean, you're talking about, you're talking about a guy who started out believing that his emperor was God. That, true Japanese believe that their emperor is a descendant of the sun god. So the emperor is God. And he went from that to becoming a Christian, and it was because of the work of people like Jacob de Shazer.
Isn't there somewhere in the Bible that says that those people that have no knowledge of God, it doesn't mean that they won't go to heaven because they're, it's like, their ignorance, so to speak, you know, it's not their fault. I mean, as opposed to, say, like the Jewish people, the Pharisees and the Sadducees. I mean, as opposed to say, like the Jewish people, the Pharisees, and the Sadducees.
Well, that's, remember, Jesus repeatedly said that, didn't he? Jesus repeatedly said that, didn't he? He says, "I gave you the chance, you didn't take it," right? So, yeah, what you're saying is correct.
And there's some people who say that the Bible also says that before the end of the world, everybody has to know. So that God and Jesus will be revealed to everybody before the world ends.
Read Revelation. That's exactly what John is saying. One other thing to keep in mind, remember, when we say the apostles greet, we say Jesus descended into hell. Why do you do that?
Because then they don't have purgatory or anything, and we have to do, Jesus did it for us.
Well, but the reason he did that was because the people down there never knew who he was. So he's giving them the chance.